Hi, everybody. Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm your host, Cheryl Hens. We've got a guest co-host tonight with us, and she is seated to the left of me. She's normally in here as our floor director, but she wanted to give this a whirl tonight, and it's her birthday, so I said, let's do it. So this is Roxanne Rolfe, and she's going to be asking some of the questions. We're happy to be joined by two of the candidates running for the Oshkosh Common Council, and they are to my immediate right, sort of, to the northeast of me. We have Jacob Flom, and then seated next to him is Tom Assuma. And as I said, they are both running for Oshkosh Common Council. Before we get into questions for them, some dates that I want people to be aware of. Absentee and early voting starts for the spring election on March 19th. So just, we're taping this on the 7th, so 12 days from now is when early voting and absentee voting starts. The general election is on April 2nd, and that will be not just a general election for our area, but it's also the presidential preference will be part of that ballot. Polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. and they close at 8:00 p.m. And if you need to find out how to get registered to vote, or you need to and want to do some early voting or absentee voting, contact either the city clerk, the county clerk, or you can go to the website, myvote.wi.gov. So myvote.wi.gov. And we'll be putting that up, as well as these gentlemen's websites will be going up throughout the show. So with that, welcome. Happy to have you guys both here.
Great to be here.
Let's, let's start by finding out a little bit about who you are, what you do for a living, you know, why you want to get into the silly Oshkosh Common Council business. So you're first here, Tom?
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Jacob Flom. I'm currently the Winnebago County Board Supervisor for District 16. That's actually where we're sitting right now. It's part of the downtown area, City Hall, and then pushes into the UW Oshkosh campus. So I've been on the board since 2022. I've served on four committees, the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, the Structure Review Task Force, I chaired that, the Safe Streets Initiative, and the Information Technology Committee. So for me, public service is a big passion of mine. I currently work for our local representative in Congress, Representative Growth Man. Additionally, I'm a master student at Oshkosh as well. So if you're familiar with Councilman Mike Ford, he's actually my professor right now in the Masters in Public Administration program.
I go to church with Mike.
Excellent. So for me, I'm also involved locally as well. I'm in Oshkosh Rotary Southwest. I'm on the Board of Most Busted Sacramento Parish. I'm a member of Leadership Oshkosh Class of 2024. I help out with our Local Knights of Columbus group and Propel Oshkosh, which is our Young Professionals Networking Group.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And why do you want to be on City Council?
Public service is a passion of mine. It really is. I've been able to kind of learn and understand the issues that we're facing on the county board, and I really want to bring that sort of experience over to the city. I've been a staffer on the state level and on the federal level as well, so I understand the interplay between the federal, local, and state levels of government.
Okay.
And for me, the pressing issues that I think we should need to solve are affordability, housing, and economic development.
Okay, and we're going to get to those. Tom, what about you? What do you do? And why?
Well, little background, I've graduated from Oshkosh High School. I was fortunate enough to be elected to Badger Boys State, so that was my first taste of public service and state and local politics. I went on to get a degree from Carthage College in Public Management and Business Administration. And one of my first jobs was a CDO position here in Oshkosh, working for the Oshkosh Industrial Development Committee. We were very successful in putting up a spec building in the North Industrial Park to try to deliver business to Oshkosh when all of Thoda City guys were closing their doors. We also started the development of the Southwest Industrial Park, of which we started laying out that whole park to attract more business, and very successful in keeping people employed as more and more people were getting out of the woodworking business and some of the other companies that were closing their doors. So that was a big part of my first upbringings, but then I got 40 years into private business. I've been blessed with leadership skills and so on, and bringing them to bear and help lead now in the city of Oshkosh because I believe in Oshkosh and have a passion for making it a better community for all here.
Where did you work?
I worked at Oshkosh Truck.
Okay.
So we were a $50 million business when I started there. I eventually left, and you know, now there's 7.2 billion, but a big part of that was doing and winning government business.
You've got a lot of family members who have worked for that company, so we'll talk about that off camera.
But I spent most of my time in procurement, so I was heavily involved in government procurement and making sure that we had an approved purchasing system over at Oshkosh Truck, so we didn't have to jump through a lot of hoops when we do our purchasing.
Well, since Jacob said the things that he's, the committees and boards and commissions or so forth that he's on, do you want to go ahead and tell us?
I am heavily participating at St. John's Lutheran Church when my father was a minister. I'm on the church council there. I'm on the Board of Music and Worship, also on the Property Committee.
Okay.
Also heavily involved in coaching basketball, both volunteering at the YMC and the Oshkosh West Basketball Club, so.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to ask one more quick question.
You go right ahead.
Because we kind of jumped into some of this other stuff. So how do each of you think that the things that the boards, commissions, groups that you've served on, how will that help you in your service on the City Council if you're elected?
Yeah, absolutely. So to start, it's about building consensus, right? There are many different people on these committees, commissions, and boards, and everybody sees the world a little bit differently. They always have different opinions on things, so it's about coming together where you can and making sure that you can make a decision that's applicable to the entire community and benefits everybody. So additionally, public-private partnerships, something that I've been really fortunate to see on the Board is how can we get a grip on our opioid crisis in our community? So working with the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office, we've been able to create a sobriety program in our jail, which I'm very proud of, and that is in its pilot phase right now. And so the ability to kind of carry that service forward onto the City Council and coming to those consensus agreements, understanding the issues, and working with people is, in my opinion, the best way to get things done. So I feel ready to go.
All right, excellent. Tom, what about you?
As far as I'm concerned, you know, there's so many experts on a lot of these committees, and you really have to rely on the experts, because I'm not an expert in everything that goes on here. So when these committees come up with their recommendations, it's very important that I take that into effect and make sure that decisions are made based upon the experts' input. So I did work on the traffic board back in the day when the Sioux line was a big problem for us, getting over to the hospitals. So we were looking at underpasses, overpasses, but you do have some real expertise in this city that know how to attack the issues and then bring forth real positive solutions.
Sure. I would just ask one thing. You're kind of soft-spoken, and that's a good thing, but just if you could maybe just speak just a smidge louder so that people can hear you.
They usually tell me to church to tone her down because I really get going.
All right. Roxanne, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I would like to know a few things you believe the city is doing right.
So the one thing I'll start with is accessibility in terms of the way that citizens can access public documents. So that communication aspect, that active listening aspect, is a huge thing for me. The city's been doing that quite well. Everything is nicely laid out, and you can see it. I've actually recommended that the county look at what the city's been doing in terms of accessibility in the website and whatnot. The other thing I think the city does well is that it regularly reviews its committee, commission, and board structure. Part of my time on the county board so far has been chairing a task force about whether or not the county should actually shrink the number of committees, commissions, and boards that it has. It could be rather difficult for the public to understand and track things that are going on. The city does that automatically. And so I've referred that point over and over and over again, and that's something that I think the city does quite well. And then the Parks Department. We have a wonderful Parks Department, a great director. I was over at the new Four Seasons Building over at Lake Shore Park a couple days ago. They did a fantastic job, and so the city's doing those quite well, and I wish to see it continue.
Okay. Tom?
I think if you recognize the issues that everybody's talking about today, it's housing. You know, you have lots of jobs that are being created along the different corridors in Oshkosh and also bringing new industry, but where do the people get housed? And there are so many good developments going on all over the city. Buttermore, out on 20th Street, downtown, so you've got projects that are addressing this, the Miles Kimball Building, 9th Street went into the, you know, passed the east into the lake. So that development, I guess, is a little bit held up because of what is sourcing issues. Purchasing guys gets always blamed for everything.
Are you talking about bill unmade?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a lot going on to address the situation, and the way we're addressing it is very positive, and we need to keep moving forward in that direction.
Okay.
Okay. And so what do you think the city's doing wrong, and how do you think it should be done differently? Who would ever like to go first?
Tom, why don't you go first?
I think the city's doing a lot of things right. The issues that I'm seeing is the perception. And if you want to draw people to Oshkosh, you create the jobs, but then when you start talking about the taxes and what the taxes are in the city of Oshkosh versus the outlying areas, the Algomas, the town of Oshkosh, that's a real negative piece. Somehow, we have to turn around the increases in our city taxes. I got my tax bill. The county reduced their, their assessment on me. The school system was reduced, but the city, 3.9% increase. This has to be turned around. We somehow have to turn this boat around so that the taxes don't become an issue. Now you have the special assessments on the wheel tax.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Those are added pieces that we need to address and really focus on to make sure that people want to come and live in Oshkosh.
All right. Well, you know, let's, let's talk for a moment, since you, since you did bring it up, the housing situation. I mean, I'm, I'm glad that you feel that it's being done well. I think if people can afford it, it's being, being done well. But the reality is, people can't afford these apartments. And I've got, I've got some stats here. There was a housing study done for the city back in 2021, which said that the city will grow by more than 3,200 permanent residents by the year 2030.
Correct.
And to accommodate that growth, City Manager Mark Roloff said in a subsequent State of the City address that we need to produce almost 1,700 new housing units, whether that be apartments, or condos, or townhomes, or single-family homes. We need that many. And so then the City Council, some members on the council actually said we need more than that. I don't know where they got their numbers from. They were referring to the same study, but they said we needed 5,000 dwelling units. But either way, it's a lot of housing units. But the ALICE study, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. You are. Are you familiar with that, Tom?
No.
Okay. So ALICE is an acronym, and I have to make sure I get it right, for Asset Limited, Income Constrained, Employed. And that study showed that at the time it was done, and that was done about two years ago, a one-bedroom unit in our area, even a studio, was going for $80 to $900 a month. A two-bedroom was going for more than $1,200 a month, and those numbers are even higher now. Some of these apartments that are being built, you know, a two-bedroom is $2,200, $2,300 a month. That is not affordable when we have a median income here of, let's see, I had it here, I had it here, and now I can't find it. I believe it was about $59,000 is our median income based on the last census. $59,000, people can't afford two grand a month. So they're nice developments if people can afford them, but we need to get something that's more affordable for the majority of the people who live in this community. So are you, what are you proposing for that?
Well, I believe the downtown development has got a lot of state funding and federal funding, which make those units a little bit more affordable than, say, some of the outlying projects that are on 20th Street and Buttermore. The problem you really have is the cost of materials, the cost of labor these days. So when you talk about affordable, that whole equation has gone up immensely over the past three or four years. Market-driven costing, when you have more available and the demand isn't that high, then the prices should come down. And that's the real key to it in the market society, is more supply and less demand, then pricing starts to reduce. So I'm not sure if that's the answer, but we do have solutions along Main Street over there and Jefferson Street for some of those issues, but some of the other ones are just, it's going to have to be the law of supply and demand.
So I think one of the things that the city should do to seriously tackle is to start a task force about housing with, with the county, with the school district, with our GoEDC and Chamber partners, as well as our local business community, and then our housing nonprofits as well. What Tom mentioned, there is an issue with affordability. One of the key items that I'd like to see is people who go to school here at UWO to stay here and start their careers here. They can't afford a lot of those new housing units that are currently being built, some of those apartments. They just simply can't afford those. When you're right out of college, depending on your salary, you're not going to be able to go into a $3,000 apartment. You just can't. And so for me, workforce housing, that is adjusted to the median income in the way that it's developed, that it's designed for that, is something that's a big priority of mine. And something I think the city should do is try to proactively seek out grants for brownfield and blighted lot remediation, so that we can do something with these empty spaces of property. Because if you're able to utilize those spaces, it becomes a safer area, people have a place to live, and so with the jobs that they have, now they can actually live in town. So we're not losing them to places like Appleton, Green Bay, Fond du Lac, right? So that's something that I would really like to see. I'd like to see that task force launch. I'd like to see them make policy recommendations that are all-encompassing. I mean, cost of materials is expensive. The city's landlocked, we have that. Any annexations that we've done recently have come with some ridiculously high special assessments for people who just simply cannot afford those. So for me, I'd like to see that task force form. I'd like them to make their policy recommendations, a well-rounded task force that focuses on a broad range and variety of housing, so that we can actually start addressing these issues as a City Council. And focus on the next generation, focus on where they want to live and kind of the lifestyle that they see themselves in, whether it's downtown or whether it's in a single-family home. Those are things that we need to have a variety of as we're going to approach this.
Sure. Well, you know, speaking of the development along Lake Buttermore Drive, you know, it's several buildings, four stories high, a total of 522 units altogether, and a project that is expected to be or projected to be spread out eight to 10 years. Now, just at its most recent council meeting a couple nights ago, or maybe it was last week, I can't recall, the days are flying by.
Really are, aren't they?
But anyway, at its last meeting, the council basically fast-tracked the entire thing and approved all phases of the development. I understand in some respects, if you put yourself in the shoes of the developer, you want to know that your project is going to be approved and come to fruition, that you're not just going to have it half-done, and then the city's not going to approve something else, and then your whole project sort of falls apart.
Sure.
As you envisioned it to be. So I get that. But I also understand that this really is fast-tracked. There's issues about the species that live out along there. I've got concerns about whether the, the ground, the soil, is sufficient enough to withstand a huge building like this with underground parking. I don't know that much about construction. I'm sure that those people do know, and I'm hoping and praying that they take those things into account. But how do you feel about the fact that they fast-tracked it like they did?
I think it's symptomatic of a broader issue. I think the city's really hurting for housing units, and they're willing to fast-track things because it's, it's a need. You look at the Housing Needs Assessment Study, you look at the ALICE Study, those are things that it clearly screams that the city is in a housing shortage. So I can understand why they were willing to fast-track it. I have some concerns, the same concerns that you have about that. But I think this kind of goes back to the point of, let's actually look at the parcels that we have downtown that are empty, that may be blighted, that may be brownfield sites. I understand the remediation for that is expensive. There's questions about where you put some of the contaminated materials, but we need to utilize those spots, so we aren't going to the edge of town and building in an area that may not be the best place to build. So I understand why the planning commission and council are keen on fast-tracking this, but I'd like to see us kind of look at the resources that we have kind of closer to the core of town and utilize those areas. And I understand that, like I said, brownfield remediation is expensive, but there are grants out there. We can work with the state DNR, we can work with DWD, we can work with GoEDC to try to have a concerted effort to at least get these places to a spot where they can be developed.
I like those ideas, and I think those are definitely some things that should be pursued. My other concern is, it seems to be a common theme in Oshkosh, where buildings go up, businesses go in, and then within a couple of years or so, sometimes not even that long, the business fails, they move out, signage is left, the buildings start falling into disrepair. One that immediately comes to mind, and a business is now in there, but it took many years to get in there, and that was the old Fields Restaurant on the corner of 9th and Nap. You know, I mean, that signage, an empty sign holder basically stood there for years. It makes the city look like crap, really. And it does not, it doesn't look good for those of us who live here, and it doesn't create a good image for people visiting. So my concern is, if, if all these big buildings get built, you know, what happens if they fail? And then what do we do with these buildings that are only partially full, or maybe in some cases, the whole thing just falls apart? Not the building, but the project itself. And then what do we do with these buildings? Do you have a thought on that, Tom?
Well, when I was part of the Oshkosh Industrial Development Committee, that was part of our whole mission. We started listing the buildings that were empty and really started broadcasting them throughout Wisconsin, out, throughout the nation, indicating to people that we're looking for different manufacturing spaces, and here's what was available in Oshkosh. Understanding the square footage, all of the electrical requirements that were in the, in the building, so people had a good idea. And we were selling these, these parcels so we could get them reinvigorated, if you will. But it took effort, but it, we do have a group that's concentrating on that. When you talk about the, the buildings, I don't see many housing buildings that go really empty these days, and that's an issue, obviously. But when you talk about the buildings that lay dormant, you go over there, over the, they had that shopping center off of 44 there, there's a lot of empty space there.
Oh, where the old Walmart was.
Right. That whole area, I mean, do we redevelop that and look at that as housing area? I mean, there's an opportunity there.
No, it can't be.
Well, it's about zoning and everything else that we have.
It's about the airport overlay, yeah.
Right.
And it's very difficult to, I don't know what could go in there, but I think the airport should buy it, you know, or the county should buy it and figure out what to do. But yeah, I know what you mean. It, it looks terrible just sitting there.
Right. But you know, those are the things that, if a developer wants to come in, we've got to help them get that done, is my opinion. We can't put up more bureaucratic red tape and make it a tougher issue to do business here in Oshkosh. We've got to find a way to make people want to come to Oshkosh and develop within Oshkosh.
No, I totally agree. And you're right, we haven't seen any housing developments really fail, but we also haven't been putting up these huge developments like we are now with these really prices of rent that are skyrocketing. I know of one person who signed a lease in one of the properties, and he's already having problems paying his rent. And he's got a roommate, and he's really regretting signing that lease because he knows that he can't afford it.
Absolutely.
And so I fear that that's going to be a problem when all these developments are going up, and they're all, I think, upscale, you know? And I think we need something, we need both, you know? We need that end of things for the people who can't afford something nicer, but we also need something for the folks like those of us who are sitting in this room, who can't afford, you know, two grand a month for a two-bedroom apartment. And so I, I do fear that at some point, these buildings are, are not going to be full.
And I can speak to that. I run on the Riverwalk pretty much every day, and there's a new building there, it's right on the Riverwalk, that is currently about half-occupied, and they're advertising for Airbnbs. And so that's a question where, you know, are we really building to best fit for the community? And I do understand there's not a lot of revenue to be made if you're a developer for building lower-income units. I get that, that's why they're subsidized to a degree. But I think it's that, that best test fit, you know, what's being built that's good for Oshkosh? I mean, we don't want to see entire apartment buildings that are out for rent for Airbnbs. That's not why they're built. We want these people to be community members, not people who are just passing through in a way. And so when it comes back to your question and your, your point about those empty lots, it is an economic development issue. I think it's a communication issue. I think we could do a lot better job in advertising while revolving loan funds and making sure that we have a good atmosphere and a good kind of wraparound, I guess, public-private partnership in terms of developing our local economy and making sure that these locations don't sit as empty for as long as they do. In terms of business, we need to really look in the mirror and do an economic development checkup and say, okay, would a business rather be in Oshkosh, or would they rather be in Fond du Lac, or would they rather be in Appleton? It may be a little more expensive in Appleton, but there may be housing in Appleton for the people who work there. So it's more than just one thing of, you know, let's lower or raise the tax rate. It's more of, you know, is this a place where an employer wants to work, where their, their employees can live here, or they would want to live here? So it's about, you know, it's that multifaceted approach and making sure that we have a good business environment, that the resources for development are there, and that we're kind of broadening our net instead of, you know, the, the few four, five, six, seven developers that do most of the work here in town.
Okay. All right. Well, let's talk about those street repairs, Roxanne.
No problem. So in order to help pay for much-needed street repairs or reconstruction, as its most recent meeting, the council approved $35 per vehicle fee or a tax while increasing the annual water sanitary sewer and the storm sewer utilities by a quarter to one-half percent. This method will supposedly be fair, because it will be shared by all drivers with vehicles registered in the city that are under 8,000 pounds. There's nothing fair about this, when we all know it is the heavier vehicles doing most of the damage to the roads. Where do each of you stand on these fees and increased utility costs? And if elected, will you try to have this matter reconsidered and propose something that is truly more fair or equitable so that the heavier vehicles share the cost? Who would like to go first?
I'll take a crack at it. So the 8,000-pound dispensation that you mentioned, how they're reconciled, that's a state law. And so one thing that I would really like to do is to work with our local legislators and say, you need to change this.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but what do you mean it's a state law?
So it's a state statute. The fact that if you're going to implement a local wheel tax, that any vehicle over 8,000 pounds, you can't.
They're exempt.
They're exempt, right?
Do you know why?
I'm not quite sure why. I don't know the exact specifics of the legislation.
Because that's messed up.
Yes. And so that's something that has to be fixed. Stat. You know, for me, there are pros and cons to the, to that. The pros are, is that I think everybody can be honest with themselves and understand that the special assessment system was unsustainable. It was. I mean, you were having people who were on fixed income in single-family homes who were getting assessed $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, and people just can't afford that. They can't afford that. And then on top of that, if you have a 10- to 15-year payback period with 4% interest, the city's borrowing against that, and that goes into the debt servicing fund, and that comes across in your property tax levy. So for that, I understand how that is unsustainable, but at the same time, we're one of the more expensive vehicle registration fees in the state at $35. To compare, I think Appleton and Shuboygan are at 20. The closest one to us is Janesville, which is at 40. And so it has the potential to go up, and that's a concern that I have, and it's like, is this the next stormwater utility fee that just keeps going up and up and up?
Yeah.
And one of the things that I would really like to see is that state law permitting, is there any way where we could potentially tie this to core CPI inflation rates, so that you can't arbitrarily raise it, that you could only raise it within the rate of inflation? For me, that's something I would like to see. The other thing is that there are people left behind in the cold. There's about a couple thousand or so houses in Oshkosh that are still on the hook for their assessments while also paying that wheel tax. I think the city, the least the city can do is afford them some sort of relief or property tax credit or something, because they're essentially being double taxed. So those are some of the tweaks that I would like to see to this. One of my concerns is that eventually corporations will kind of look at this and say, well, Oshkosh with their wheel tax, we have vehicles that are under 8,000 pounds, and if the state's And if the state is going to change the over 8,000-pound law, maybe we'll do business elsewhere. But at the same time, what's passed is passed and I would like to kind of see it tweaked to the point where it can be more affordable and it's not going to turn into the next stormwater utility fee. Because if it does, then that really bites away at affordability in the city.
Absolutely.
And so, and then people are just going to choose not to be here or to move. I've talked to many people who say, property tax levy is too high, I'm moving to Florida. Or I'm moving to Appleton or I'm moving elsewhere. And we, we can't lose those people.
Right. Yeah, because the more people you lose, the less money you're getting from the state.
Yes.
You know, in shared revenue or anything else.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it is all cyclical and you can't have one, they're not mutually exclusive.
Not at all, no.
You know? Tom, where do you stand on this? I, I know on your website, you've got some points about this so-called wheel tax.
I was deeply disappointed when they passed the wheel tax. I really felt that the, the utility piece was a fair and reduced their cost by 60%.
You think it was fair or it wasn't?
It was without the wheel tax, that you would leave the property owner still with his 40% payment rather than the 100% that everybody else was paying. So you've got an equitable situation with those that already had paid, that are still paying, maybe they're five to 10 to 15 years or whatever it is. But I guess the Chamber of Commerce said that, hey, if you've got an improved street, that may raise the value of your home. So if the people that are paying now on the Cherry Street and Seventh Street are paying 40% rather than 100%, they still have skin in the game of paying for their street. So my whole thing is, let's get rid of that wheel tax. Or if it's coming up, then somebody wants to raise it, let's put it to zero. And get it back so the property owner still has a little bit of the, the cost of improving the streets. Now, you look at some of the streets that are being improved. I mean, you look at Cherry Street, who owns most of that? It's these student housing people. I mean, and they live in the city and they might have to pay $35, but they're probably overjoyed that finally Cherry Street, which is just a poor, poor street and has been forever. I don't know how many 8,000-pound trucks go down there, but that street has been...
Probably not many because it's not a truck route.
Right.
So...
And Seventh, you look at the flooding problem over on the Ohio Street area. I mean, they're addressing that, which is positive. And you're hoping that, you know, back when in the 60s, we had flooding down Main Street. We had flooding all over the city. And we've done a lot over the years to start taking care of that stormwater and make sure that it's not flooding out our homes anymore. And you're hoping that this stormwater fee, because we've put so much money into this, will start being leveled off or even being reduced because we don't have to do all of the improvements that we've done over the last 30, 40, and 50 years.
Well, I, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but I do think we've got to get a handle on these utility bills because the costs are too high. We have had, I, I don't even know offhand because we've had so many, but we've had multiple, I want to say at least four, five, maybe even six water rate increases in the last few years. It just seems like it keeps going up, it keeps going up, it keeps going up. And at some point, it's got to stop. I understand the federal government is giving us these unfunded mandates, you got to do this, you got to do that. The EPA is saying, you got to do this, you got to do that. But unfunded mandates, they are funded. They're funded by folks like us. And if the government wants to put forth a mandate, then they should be providing the funding or at least a big chunk of the funding so it's not on the backs of all of us who are trying to stay afloat. You know, at some point, I worry about older folk, or any folks really, who are, who are on a fixed income. They're not getting a cost of living increase at the same rate that their utility bill is going up. And I'm talking about the water bill from the city. And I worry about them being priced out of their homes at some point. You know, what, what do we do about folks like that?
I've talked to people who have been priced out of their homes, who are planning on selling. There are a number of people in the city who have either gotten massive assessments or they look at the fees and they say, they just kind of throw their hands up and say, I can't do this anymore. So on the county board, one of the things that we're very familiar with are unfunded mandates from the state of Wisconsin.
Yeah.
So any level of government that you work on, there's always unfunded mandates from somebody one level higher than you. Whether you're on the local level and there's a state mandated service that you have to pay for and then they just say you have to fit the bill for all of it. Or if you're in the state government and the feds have something, or if the feds have something for local government or county government. So in my opinion, I think these fees need to be indexed to either net new construction, if that's applicable by state statute, or the core CPI rate of inflation. Because at the current rate that they're going, I think the city's gone like over 100% in terms of increase from the stormwater utility fee when it was first established, I think in 2003. So, I mean, it's gotten to a point where it's absolutely unsustainable and we're not treating people the way they should be treated if they want to live in Ashgosh. Nobody deserves to be priced out of their home. And if you've been living here your entire life and, you know, you've worked here, you've raised a family here, you're retiring here, you don't deserve to be treated that way. Nobody really does. So for me, if we can kind of get a grip on these fees and kind of come up with some sort of plan to mitigate cost increases or possibly even drive costs down, I'd love to see that. That would be something that I'm very much on board for. So if we can kind of delve into the study and see, all right, where do we sit in terms of other municipalities of our size and in northeast Wisconsin? Are we an outlier? I know our mill rate's very high. So if we're an outlier, what's the underlying cause of that outlier? And what can we do to try to bring these fees down or stabilize them? Because again, this bites into overall affordability. And if we won't be as an attractive place to live and work if these fees are just off the charts.
Sure. Tom, what are your thoughts here?
My thoughts are basically come from my experience in private industry. And when we go and we need to reduce costs because we have to be competitive, we look at lean principles. Where are we having redundant processes that are adding non-value-added costs? And I believe if, you know, the costs keep going up, something has to be looked at, how do we drive the costs down? And what are the alternatives? And you have experts here that can bring us to this point. But we did a lot of studies over at Ashgosh Truck saying, where are we doing redundant processes that are adding no value? Meaning, we're going to get rid of them and reduce our cost structure. And I really think we have to look at that in the utilities and saying, why are our costs going up astronomically? I mean, if they're, if there's, they are sustainable costs that you have to pay for, but where is the waste there? We can't be, as I said, when people would come to me when I'm purchasing and I need more money for my product, I says, well, I can understand that and you can prove that to me. But by golly, you're not getting more overhead percentage, you're not getting more profit percentage. Not that that's an issue here in the, the public sector. But you got to look at the process and say, where can we drive out on the, the costs that don't add any value to what we're doing today?
Yeah, the city will say, hey, we're, we don't have any fat in our budget. We're, we're very lean already. I don't know if they've actually gone through a lean principles or Sigma Six or anything like that. But they will say and have said for years that there's just no fat in the budget. And I understand that these unfunded mandates, again, about the water utility and so forth, I understand we need to do this and we need to do that and there's a cost to that, I get it. But then let's find some other places that can be cut. You know, do either of you have, have you looked at the city budget? Where do you think we are fat in the budget?
I think it's just doing a needs and wants assessment. One of the things that we've done on the county level is we've been able to kind of look and say, all right, do we need this this year or can this wait until next year? Do we need to, you know, augment the service this year or can we pare back on it a little bit? I fully believe that the city can deliver on all of its services while being financially responsible and having an eye towards the future. One of the things that I've looked at is long-term debt. The county, right now, by the amount of debt that state statute, state law allows you to have is currently sitting under 10%. The city is sitting at about 48%. It used to be about 70%, but now it's back below 50. So the amount of bonding that the city's doing, I mean, I understand that, you know, there was a report from the chamber saying they want to invest more in our roads and I do too, I want to invest more in our roads. But just kind of looking at, okay, you know, have we said that we've trimmed the fat out of this? Or can we maybe do a little bit more? Because then there's the perception bubble as well. And so when you talk about overall affordability and how much money that the city's been spending overall and our overall tax rate, if we're doing, say, a fee for service, that should be offset. You need to show me where the opportunity cost is in that and is it going to come off the property tax levy? If we're going to keep issuing fees for service, there has to be an appropriate property tax levy offset with that. Where is the opportunity cost in this? So that's something that I've seen on the county board. If you're proposing a new fee, if you're proposing a new increase, if you're proposing a new spending, is there also a corresponding place where you can lower costs? And that's something I'd really like to see in budgeting going forward.
Sure. I am, I'm at that age where I'm a member of AARP and have been for a long time. And, you know, I, I look at their publication and I was reading in there, not too terribly long ago, that in, in some communities throughout this country, the people who are kind of being priced out of their homes a little bit so that they're not priced out of their homes, if they can't afford their property tax bill or their water utility bill or whatever the case may be. This is really kind of thinking outside the box because the, the city or the county will let them do odd-type jobs, jobs that they don't have to have specialized training for and that kind of thing. So they, they do these jobs and their wages that they would otherwise be earning go to apply toward their, their tax bill or their utility bill, whatever the case may be. And it seems to be working really well. I mean, I don't know what all has to go into something like that. But when I read that, I thought, wow, that's a really creative way of helping people stay in their homes, make them feel like there's a purpose that they can serve at the same time. And so, I mean, have you guys heard of anything like that or what do you think about that idea, Tom?
I haven't heard about that, but that's creative thinking and that's what we need more of to address these problems. One of the things that I really need and what we got out of private industry is holding people accountable. And accountability starts from the city manager down to his direct reports, down to the supervisors, down to the people that serve the people. And if you hold these people accountable and say, hey, you're not getting a budget increase, you got to find a way to drive your budget down next year and hold them accountable for that. That's the things that I think we need to implement from a management standpoint. And we've done that in private industry and said, hey, you've got to find a way to run your department, run whatever you're responsible for and do it at lesser cost than you did last year. And I'll tell you, there's smart people in those departments that'll figure that all out. And if you hold them accountable and judge their performance at the end of the year based upon some of those principles, I think we can drive some costs out of this and start driving the tax levy down a little bit and start turning the boat. You know, if you get into that mode that we're always thinking, oh, the taxpayer can fund this, the taxpayer... No, no. Go back to the cost structure and say, how do we drive costs out of this?
Well, and how about, how would you feel about perhaps a wage freeze for a year or two for a lot of employees, especially department heads? I mean, I like Mark Roloff, but he keeps getting raises and yet we're not all getting those kinds of raises. And the people on fixed incomes aren't getting those kinds of raises. And I don't want Mark to, because I know he watches this show. I don't want him to feel like we're, like I'm picking on him. But, you know, I mean, things have to start at the top and then flow down like things normally do.
Absolutely do.
How would you feel about that kind of an idea?
Well, wage, wages are, people are going to move where they can get their money. So they have to be competitive to stop people from jumping to other jobs. So that's one of the, the problems I have with wage freezes. But holding the top people accountable that says, here, your job evaluation is based upon you coming in with a budget next year that's 3.9% less than the year before. And if you're not doing your job, we have to find somebody that can do the job.
Well, I know the city does that type of thing at budget time. The county, I'm sure, does too. But it's, it's not always easy.
No, no.
You know?
It's not.
And I don't think that, I, I don't think anyone in particular is not being accountable. I mean, you know, it's kind of like when Act 10 passed. It was sort of attacking all teachers and, you know, I think by and large, most teachers are pretty good and they deserve the wages that they have. But, you know, then there's always those few that are kind of ruining it for everybody else. So I don't know, I agree that people should be held accountable, but I think you can only cut things so far before you kind of start losing stuff.
Well, I don't see that we've been cutting. I mean, if there's increase over increase, you've got a mentality that says increases are okay.
You have some examples of that because...
Well, you just take, oh, your tax bill, 3.9% and everybody on the council and the city managers says, well, we thought that was a very fair. That's not what we want to do. We want to have a mentality, we have to start cutting costs. We have to find the waste and get rid of it. That's the mentality.
And it's interesting that you said that your school taxes went down because mine didn't.
Mine did.
I'm surprised by that because, you know, they, it costs a lot of money to build Vell Phillips.
Right, and the new Menominee Elementary School.
That surprised me.
And so for me, it's, one of the things that we've been able to do with the counties, we've actually, one of the few local government institutions that's been able to actually drop our property taxes. We were able to do two equalized property tax cuts over the past two years. And they haven't been substantial, but we've been able to actually achieve that. Now, the county's also moving into a new style of budgeting. It's called priorities-based budgeting. Where we rank our priorities in terms of services and then we go in the direction where we think what we should prioritize and then what isn't prioritized, we either hold firm or cut. And so I think that the city does need to kind of tighten the belt a little, a little bit. Not to the point where people are losing their jobs or they can't make, you know, their mortgage or whatnot. But we need to look at this to a point where, okay, let's do a kind of wage study. The county did a wage study recently and we looked and we saw, okay, where are we right-sizing wages for our employees? The county has about 1,100 of them. And so we looked at the other counties of our size around Wisconsin and in northeast Wisconsin and said, okay, here are the appropriate tweaks that we made. It turns out that actually a lot of our employees were underpaid and we were in the position where we could afford both a raise of the wages and cut property taxes. We were able to make that work. So I want to be at a point where the city can actually do that instead of looking at saying, okay, we're going to continue to raise taxes and then have kind of a more top-heavy structure. One of the things, a warning story about that is UW-Ashgosh and their budget deficit and looking at the number of ratios between professors and administrators. People who interface with the students and people who do not. And so when you're looking at that, you have to be very careful because you can get kind of caught up in the middle management and it gets to a point where there are, you're staring down the barrel of a massive budget deficit. Now, the city doesn't have that quite yet, but when you look at kind of the overall budget outlay and the amount of money that certain people are making, I think the city should do a wage study to see, okay, what are we right sizing? And I'm not saying any wages should be cut, but at the same time, if we do need to do a potential wage freeze, that may possibly be a subject worth taking up. But at the end of the day, we need to take a, a good assessment of our fiscal health, look at the opportunity costs, look at how we compare to other communities and say, which direction should we go in?
Can I just ask one more quick question?
Go right ahead.
How do you each feel about, and this is not a popular thing, but, you know, we have a lot of tourism coming into this community. How, how do each of you feel about a potential half percent, just half percent, tax increase, a city tax and a county tax? That way, if we can't get the over 8,000-pound trucks...
Right, yeah.
You know, then at least we can have people who are coming to this community for whatever event it might be, they're at least sharing in some of the costs that we have to bear here in the city. How do you each feel about that?
So currently in state law, only one municipality in terms of a city is able to levy a sales tax and that is Milwaukee. That's it. Recently, it was no city could do that, but now it is a class-one city and the only class-one city that exists in the state of Wisconsin is Milwaukee. So Winnebago County is one of four counties left without a sales tax. In terms of funding city improvements, I don't necessarily think that a county's sales tax would necessarily alleviate some of the revenue issues that the city has because the county's under no obligation to do any revenue sharing with any of the cities in Winnebago County. So state law prohibits Ashgosh from going forward and taking a sales tax and the county may use that for its own internal improvements. So one thing that I would like to see the state do is their potential for us, I know one of the councilmen, current councilman said that, and I know this is probably not the most popular thing to say in the world, but could we possibly levy a one-cent gas tax, right? To the point where people are traveling through Ashgosh, right? And they're either coming in from other parts of the community where we could actually net some of that. So that would take a state law change. But in terms of a county's sales tax, I don't think it's necessarily germane because the county would just use that for their own funds. And we currently don't have that opportunity in state tax, in taxes. So I would rather see us get creative instead of levying new taxes and fees because that can become a slippery slope. But at the end of the day, there would have to be a change in state law if you even wanted to have this conversation.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Can I jump to the pipes?
Yes, please, yeah, go ahead.
This is something that has happened with me last summer and some other people I talked to in town in regards to the lead pipes in town. There's a push to meet the federally mandated deadline to have the homes' pipes inspected by year's end and I believe for the lead pipes and the future elimination of lead pipes in our homes. There are a couple of issues the council and city need to be aware of. And first, shouldn't financial assistance be available to all homeowners instead of just those who meet income requirements? The second, some contractors are under the impression that people are automatically getting money from the city to replace their lead pipes or at least a portion of them and...
And they're charging more because of it.
Yes. This happened to me last summer. By one of the contractors the city suggested me go to. And when he found out I wasn't getting the extra money, he brought his price down real fast. Who would like to jump in first on that one?
Well, I have seen the, the lead pipe piece come to my home and, you know, call it to get an evaluation. Be interesting to see how many people have called and gotten evaluations because I'm not hearing that that's happening a lot. You have a, a date that has to be met. So it'd be interesting to see what the person that's in charge of this in the city, where he's at and what's his plan to get compliant. As far as the costs, that always gets to be the, the big ruse. You know, you're forced to do something. The lead pipes obviously are a serious health concern. concern and need to be addressed. If you have them in your home and you get some type of assistance, I mean, we have to have some control over the cost so that you're not being overcharged like you were by the contractor.
Yeah, he tried.
And I don't know if we screen the contractors and say, hey, these ones have been approved to be able to do this type of work.
Well, maybe they should be.
And that's a possibility.
And I think it's important that these contractors be told that people are not automatically getting money to help, you know, offset the cost of replacing pipes.
There's no automatic subsidy. It's not.
Yeah.
There's no automatic subsidy there and I think that's a communication issue. And it also goes to the fact that our city's housing stock is actually pretty old. And so if we want to kind of have a rejuvenation on housing, the lead pipe issue is going to be a big portion of that. So I know that on the county level, we also do some lead remediation in terms of, that's mostly for walls and for paint through the Winnebago County Health Department. Is there a potential partnership that could be done with both the city and the county and possibly some grant funds out there to help us kind of proactively go through these? If people are willing, I mean, it's their home, right? So they're not, you know, forced to. If we could go through these and at little to no cost to the taxpayer because we have some grant funds for that. So I understand that grant funds are not free money. I mean, it does come from somewhere, but I'm sure out there, there's some sort of state or federal grant program that would allow us to carry out these inspections and some of these remediations at a lower cost than they're currently being carried out at. And also just having the city have a pre-screened list of contractors and saying, hey, these people are not getting funds from the city, do not overcharge them because they are not being subsidized. That's just a communication issue.
Yeah, I think that's a biggie. So was the city, did the city actually say, here are some contractors that you can call?
They sent me notice how I had to get my pipes done and these are some city people I could call. And one of them charged, one charged me $8,500. Yeah, because he thought I would automatically get $3,500 from the city. And I said, no, I'm not. Well, then all of a sudden, he sends me a paper saying, $5,500, you misunderstood me. And I'm thinking, no, I didn't.
No.
And it's too late for you, mister.
So, yeah, communication is, I mean, that's...
How dare you?
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
Communication's paramount.
Yeah, absolutely it is.
You know? Especially if you're going to be providing a list of, not necessarily city-approved contractors, but the city's saying, here's who you can call, then they need to make sure that these people understand.
Some of them are just assuming.
Yeah.
100%.
Well, and, you know, what's the problem with...
Oh, yeah, assuming.
Taking contractors and say, these ones are approved. You know, at Oshkosh Truck, that's what we used to do is approve certain people to paint our products. And so we said, here's the places you can go. You still have competition, you get to choose.
Yeah.
But these ones are pre-approved and they know exactly what they're supposed to do. Now, if you have the same thing for contractors and say, hey, these contractors understand you're not getting a subsidy and you get to choose from this group that we've worked with.
Yeah. I wonder though if, you know, as a private organization or a private company, it's easy to do. I don't know if a municipality or any governmental body can, you would probably know this, Jacob, you know, I don't know that a community can send people in a direction and say, these are who we approve.
What you could do is, this has to be a willing kind of two-way process between both the contractors and the private sector and the city Public Works Department. It has to be. And it's not going to work if it's, if there's not an understanding there and saying, hey, you know, we just want to clearly communicate to you guys that these are the households that would be subsidized, these are the ones that are not going to be subsidized. And so then the city can put together something on the webpage or push it out on social media and say, okay, if you're looking to get a lead inspection done in your home, here is a list of contractors that we have. And so you have to be very careful with that. You have to go through the proper government, you know, contracting process and make sure that everything is above board and whatnot and there's no favorites being played. But at the same time, it's something that's certainly doable if you put together kind of a clearinghouse list of people who have, you know, understood a memorandum, right? That's really all it has to be. It's, you know, you understand the fact that these people over here are eligible for a subsidy, these people are not. And then they just understand it, they read it, they have a database and they go from there. That would be something that I think could be done rather easily.
Okay. We're down to about three and a half minutes here. I can't believe, but we've covered a lot of ground here. We really have. One problem, and we've talked about communication a lot here tonight, and one problem that I have seen and people that I know have seen is communication from council members. We have one council member who's sitting on the council right now, not seeking reelection, and that person has not responded to emails. One gentleman has stacks and stacks of emails that he has sent to her and there has not been any response. So I would like to have you guys go on record as to how you will, if elected, communicate with your constituents. And I would like to think that you'll respond to emails.
Yeah.
So, Tom, go ahead.
Well, that's always part of our process is that if you got an email, you had to respond within a 24-hour period. Now, you don't have to have an answer to everything, but you responded and said, it'll take me this much time to work on this and I hope to have something by whenever the timetable is.
I think that's fair.
But one of the things about servant leadership, which I'm a big proponent of, and when you talk communication, listening's a big part of that whole process. And we have to be better listeners, in my opinion. There's a lot of people that believe that there's not a lot of listening going on in the city government. Now, whether that's true or not, I can't tell you that, but if it's in that person's mind or if a lot of people believe that, then it becomes a truth. So servant leadership pounds listening, pounds empathy.
Okay.
Pounds transparency. And then when you get all the inputs, then you start to show people, persuade them that said, here's the best path.
Yeah.
And that's the feedback loop that you get. You won't make everybody happy. That's impossible.
No, you never do.
But you can actually explain your position, what you've evaluated, who you heard from, and which path you're taking.
So you'd be responding to constituents within 24 hours?
With some type of...
At least letting them know that...
I've got your email.
And you're going to work on something.
And if I can answer...
That's part of the job. I don't understand why somebody wouldn't want to go after that.